We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Neeper, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. As we celebrate Thanksgiving this week, I invite everyone to observe just a brief moment of silence to think about all that which we are thankful for, and I'll follow it up with a short prayer. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for each new morning with its light, for rest and shelter of the night, for health and food, for love and friends, and for everything else thy goodness sends. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neeper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Townsend.
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda? Ms. Townsend.
Mr. President, I move that Deborah Odom be removed from privilege of the floor and that the Neighborhood Concerns Committee report be added.
Second. The motion in the second is that Deborah Odom, under privilege of the floor, be removed and that the committee report for Neighborhood Concerns be added. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. The consent calendar.
Mr. President, I move that item A on the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Human Resources requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Clemens Nelson and Associates.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that communication number one be received and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for Ezekiel Cobb at 1467 St. John's Avenue.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number two be received and filed with the clerk authorized to file with no objections with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two and to authorize the clerk to file a letter with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. Pres.
I'm sorry, tax assessments for property maintenance. They're the same word.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified parcels.
Mr. Pres.
I'm sorry, tax assessments for property maintenance. They're the same word.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to the dedication of Ridaway.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
I move that communication number five be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to amend the contract with Brennaman Excavating, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
I move that communication number six be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation authorizing payment to R.D. Jones Excavating.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to amend the contract with Duro Last Roofing, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed. Law director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works requesting legislation to purchase a new street sweep.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes. Could they tell us that this is going to be in payment installments or are we just paying for this and done with it? What's the pay period on this purchase?
Mr. Alstra.
With purchases of this kind, we will pay lump sum. We have money in the budget to do this.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Under reports of committees from the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on November 12th at 5:30, and the subject was the Main Street Corridor zoning overlay that was being reviewed to the committee. Everyone's received a copy of the meeting, but I would like to note that a motion was made by Counselor McLean to recommend forwarding the plan of the zoning overlay to the Planning Commission for further discussion. Counselor Glenn seconded, and the motion passed. Once the Planning Commission has reviewed it and made their recommendation or approval, it will then come back and also probably come back to the committee, but as of right now, it's been forwarded to the Planning Commission. With that, I move that the committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Utilities Committee, from October 15th to November 12th. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a moral obligation meeting that evening. This was on a utility issue that led from water meter reader part that sits in the ground, I guess, flew up and hit someone. And to this, I wanted to file this report simply because it's been a while since we've had some contact with the further information that we had from the individual, so just trying to keep in touch with it. It is still an ongoing thing, but I wanted the committee members to be aware of where we sat with it, so I would like to receive, file, and approve this report.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the Utilities Committee report from October 15th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
In our meeting, November 12th, we had a meeting that was discussing the sewer rate adjustments that's going to start in the near future. This was quite a lengthy meeting. We had, Mr. Shealy had his full presentation on us, so we were through this numerous times before, and I do want to thank his department because he's been through about every neighborhood association, every chambers of commerce, anyone that'll listen to us. We've gone out, and I know he has put his best effort of trying to explain to the public exactly why we're looking at these rates, so I believe that if anyone has a question, feel free to call myself, call Mr. Shealy. I hope that we've met with everyone that could possibly listen to us, but if we haven't, please call us. I would like to read, receive, file, and approve this report.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report from November 12th. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
If I may, I would like Mr. Shealy to take a few more minutes of our time to explain it one more time, because there is some confusion on what we're, the length of time that what's going to take to get us to that flat rate and why we did.
Counselor President, members of council, the question is, as I understand it, is over the flat rate process that we're looking at and why we're moving to a flat rate. And then we are going to be phasing in the residential as well as the commercial industrial over the nine-year period for the residential customers, ten-year period for the commercial industrial, to get us to where both the inside rate and the outside rate are, in fact, the same rate, which is the definition of the flat rate. The reason why we're doing it, first off, is we're adopting, I'll say, the county model. The county model is a flat rate system. We have to remain competitive with the rate structures that are out in the county, otherwise we could be in jeopardy of losing our outside rate base, which would be very, very disastrous to the city of Lima and the inside customers that would only remain. And when you flatten the sewer rate, you, there's no highs or lows. Everybody pays the same, so, and that's what we face basically in comparison with the county rates. Everybody in the county pays, as of the first of the year, will be paying $45 a month for their sewer service. If we kept a volume-based system, which is where we're presently now, the larger customers would increase that bill, and we would be seeing bills that would range upwards of $90 a month. And that disparity between, because of the difference between a volume-based system and a flat rate system, leads to those challenges I just mentioned. Another reason why we're basically looking at that is, again, the affordability, the capacity to pay the bill. And we understand that there are residents that pays, pay a lesser bill than what we have right now. We are maintaining a conservation credit minimum, which is approximately about $5 less than what the full $50 bill will be nine years down line for, you know, our customer base just to allow that small user, the person that really goes to conservation, to have a little lesser, lesser charge. The other reason why we're moving to the flat rate system is as you, if you deal solely in a volume-based system or heavily rely on it, as you raise the rates, people will find ways to conserve, they'll find ways to use less water. We have a significant debt service that we have to absorb basically to pay for this $150 million worth of costs that's being mandated on the city. And using a flat rate system shelters you a little bit more from having to have additional rate increases because of that loss of consumption, because on a volume-based system, we have fixed, we have fixed costs that has to be met, and if you lose your volume, then you have to keep raising the rates. The flat rate system helps resolve and solve a lot of that. And again, I'll just mention that the, we are not moving, and I've heard that question, the outside customer is, in fact, moving to the $50 bill. Their bills for less than 300 cubic feet will go to $45. The outside customer that's over the 300 cubic feet will go immediately to $50 a month. And that bill, though, will be stable for the next nine years. And then the city bill will start basically with an increase that will commence, if council supports the recommendation here, on January 1st, will be the first increment, and then over the next nine years, that bill will raise up to the $45, same cost as the county would be paying for the conservation customer, and $50 for the standard, standard customer. So it is a phasing process. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
Just to tie that in, what is our alternative to not, should council vote no this evening?
The, there really is no alternative, I mean, I guess I'll say, what we're striving for is to maintain a 2% of median household income, meeting that criteria. That is the $50 a month bill. If we try to move things around and change things in this rate structure or keep it the way it is, we will not be able to keep that bill at the $50. Other people will get the $90 bills, and maybe some other people may get a, you know, $40 bill, you know, but it really is a consequence that we have, our NPDS permit is, been approved by Ohio EPA. The other letter I had on council last time, we have to actually commit to the funding schedule of those projects, which requires this rate structure, and if we can't sustain the rates that we have, then we'll have to deal with the state and federal EPA based upon our capacity not to move ahead with the mandates they're imposing on us.
Anything else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just have a couple of things, though, and I appreciate you and Sam both for explaining it, and I know it'd be tough for me to explain all that you guys are doing, though, but I had an opportunity to explain it to some folks, and just like the resident was in the back at our committee meeting, he thought that we were going to get a big lump sum hit us, and that was it until, it was like a relief to him when you explained it to him, how it gradually come to him, you know, and as I was letting everyone know, this is emergency, this must be done. We got to get this done. And some people were saying, why didn't we do it 10 years ago? Why didn't we do it then? But this is the time, we got to do it, and I appreciate you guys explaining it at the committee meeting, and I mean, you gave diagram and everything, and Sam's so healthy, you can call Sam, and he'll tell you, I mean, he repeat the same thing, so he must be sleeping it, you know, and it's great. And had an opportunity to give out the information to people, let them know, you know, it's not going to come at one big lump, and that's what I was worried about, you know, when I heard about, you sat there and listened to it all, and it showed that you guys would break it down, and a lot of folks were like, well, we might as well, we don't like it, but we got to deal with it, though. And I just hope it don't hurt our business here in Lima, you know, that's the main thing about it. I know they're going to feel a little crunched there, you know, and I'm saying little, maybe big to them, because anytime anything go up on them, they'll, they'll use that for ideal to raise prices up on some things, though, but I understand it well, and you guys did a good job, you and Sam both. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any other questions? Mr. Lowe.
Mr. President, Gary, could you explain to the people at home? I've only had one individual approach me on this, but they were confused at a focus meeting when it was mentioned 300 cubic feet, and they thought they were getting charged per 300 cubic feet. Can you break that down so individuals at home that are watching this will understand that if they're living somewhere with 1,200 feet, that it's still the rate that it is?
The current rate structure we have now is volume-based, and the first 300 cubic feet is the minimum bill. If you use 100 cubic feet, you're still going to be billed at the 300 cubic foot level, but what we also have, we call that our conservation credit, it's a little lesser charge for that first 300 cubic feet than a person under the volume-based system that use more. Under the volume-based system, the more you use, of course, the volume charges go up. On the new system we're proposing, actually, there's no volume associated with it. We have a water meter out there that we can read and still understand who qualifies for, for the conservation credit. So the only reason we're using the 300 cubic foot or any discussion of it in the new rates is to establish who qualifies for the $45 charge, you know, at the end of the day versus the $50 charge. You know, anybody else basically uses, if they use, you know, the 400 cubic feet, which is a volume, or a 700 cubic feet, is that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so in saying that, come summer, if we go into a drought, they can use all the water they want to use, basically.
Right. That is true, now, but remember, the water charge is still volume-based. This does not change the water charge. The water charge itself, the more you use, the higher your bill goes. But the sewer side of that bill basically says that, in reality, if somebody wants to water their yard, they can water their yard and not get penalized in the sewer system as they do today because they've used that much more water.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
One of the issues that was brought up at the committee meeting, it was a concern of Counselor Adams and myself, was in, you know, the purpose for establishing the new rates is to support the debt load that the city is facing to comply with EPA mandates. And the goal of maintaining the outside rate base, outside the city limits within the county, is critical to that, and we have asked that Mr. Shealy and, and the administration engage with the new county commissioners, board of commissioners, to have those discussions because we need a commitment that they will be on board, because we are going to go out and, and borrow money for these changes. We can't find out five years down the road or 10 years down the road that they want out, because if they do, this debt, the city will be paying on this debt until the year 2066.
Correct.
So we cannot change the, the rules as we go along. We need long-term commitments upfront.
Mr. President, Counselor Teppin, this, I reviewed this, the rate structure that we're proposing with council today with Mr. Catton, the county sanitary engineer. Mr. Catton is comfortable with what we have proposed here and will help take the lead in engaging the county commissioners. He believes the county commissioners, with what we have done with the rate structure to ensure that we're, you know, we're allowing a comparative rate to basically be applied, that it's equivalent to where his, the county rates are going to be, that he believes that the commissioners will have no problem in providing what literally would be probably an adjustment to the Bath Perry Service Agreement, the Findlay Road Service Agreement, and the other agreements that, that are out there that we have, and get that memorialized within the agreement so that we know that we have a long-term capacity here.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
Just, thank you for bringing this up. I had a discussion last night at the Westgate Neighborhood Association on this subject, and I'm sure that represents the concern of a lot of other people on the same issue, so I hope those folks are listening tonight, but if not, I got a nice email from Mr. Shealy today with the, making the three points, which I forwarded on to the individual, so it's good to have it in front of you to read it, too. That's a lot of information and a lot of numbers to go over and understand, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
I can forward that to the balance of council, so it really kind of outlines what I just went through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shealy. I just want to say, I commend Mr. McLean, you and your Utilities Committee, but also I know that this issue has been coming to a head for a number of years, and it is definitely several things going on at one time, but this issue is going to address the equalization of the rates, making them competitive, frankly, with the county's sanitary sewer rates, and addressing and preparing to address the upcoming cost of compliance with EPA regulations. So it is not just an easy thing to look at, and I do encourage, when we get to the ordinance, I'll encourage all of council to support it. It is something that none of us will liken, embrace, but we're left without many choices thanks to regulations that are coming to the Clean Water Act. So, is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive, file, and approve the committee report. Is there any, there's no further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next is the Neighborhood Concerns Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 15th, the committee meets with LACNIP representatives to discuss the leasing of the West Spring Street Fire Station. Chairman Jesse Lowe called the meeting of order. Current LACNIP President Neil Lester was given the opportunity to explain how LACNIP would utilize the old fire station. Committee members asked for a budget or plan, or a plan, to prove that they can handle taking over the fire station. Nothing was given due to the fact that LACNIP board members had not met yet. Counselor Neeper asked for a motion to adjourn, and it was seconded by Counselor McLean. And on October 31st, the committee met again, I called it to order. Neil Lester, along with Roy Baldridge, was given the opportunity to explain how LACNIP would utilize the fire station. Committee members asked for a budget, and we did receive it, and after looking over the finances of LACNIP and the lease agreement, the committee decided to support LACNIP. The committee also requested that LACNIP would review, review their current insurance policy for their best interest and safety, and the committee also requested that LACNIP must report by October 1st on their current status and plans for the future in their building. Second word, Counselor McLean asked for a motion to adjourn, it was seconded by first word, Counselor Neeper. All were in favor, three to zero. This is submitted by myself, third word, councilman, and I'm asking for a motion to receive, file, and approve my report.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the report. Is there any discussion? I have a question. The committee requested LACNIP report by October 1st of every, of next year?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Resolution 1812.
A resolution strongly opposing the passage of Hospital 601 by the Ohio General Assembly, which proposes uniformity measures for municipal income tax in the form of unfunded mandates and a substantial loss of revenue.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin. I move that Resolution 18-12 be placed on second reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to place Resolution 1812 on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 23912.
Lugging special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Orangeville.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 23912 be approved on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 23912 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neeper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 24012 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 24112.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with SMS Pro-Tec.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 24112 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 24112 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neeper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 24012 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 24112.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with SMS Pro-Tec.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 24112 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 24212.
Authorizing the auditor to make payment to R.D. Jones Excavating Inc. and accept a donation of services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
I move that ordinance number 24212 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 24212 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neeper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 24212 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 24312.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Army's Auto-Racing.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neeper.
I move that ordinance number 24312 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 24312 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neeper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 24312 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 24412.
Amending Sections 1040.16 and 1040.17 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 24412 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 24412 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neeper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 24412 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Mr. Neeper.
I just went out in this evening, and actually just because I forgot about it when we passed ordinance 24212, but I did want to thank R.D. Jones Excavating. For those of you who wondered why South Cole Street entering Frook Park was closed for a while, there was some excavation work done and some cleaning of Lady Finger Lake. Lady Finger Lake has really not been cleaned much since the 1930s, and there was, it was far worse than we anticipated when we first went in. And so, to offset some of that cost, R.D. Jones provided some additional support for that project, knowing that, you know, things are tight with the city. So, we appreciate that contribution that they made, and certainly encourage all of our vendors to take it easy on us the next time we go over budget on something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neeper. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. One, I'd like to remind, I'm sure everyone does know that this is a Thanksgiving week, and we ought to be thankful for our vets and the people that are fighting for our freedom. You know, we can give thanks all we want, but if it isn't for those people out there fighting for our freedom, there's not a whole lot to give thanks for. So, remind them when you see them, and thank them when you see them, buy them lunch, whatever you can do for them because they're worthy. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. And Mr. Low.
I have one thing, or two things. For the month of December and January, Eastside Neighborhood Associations will not be meeting. And the second thing that I have is, I would like to make a motion that we, as council, receive all communications and ordinances one week prior to dated council meeting for the year of 2013, and I would like to place that in council as a whole.
Second. Is that a motion?
Yes.
And the second is to pass a rule or refer it to council?
Refer to council.
Refer to council of the whole.
That we receive all communications.
Revised rule to have the agenda sent to us one week in advance?
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Well, I'm not going to vote in favor of the motion because I think it is highly impractical to put that kind of restriction on this. We have had these agendas, there's an agenda deadline, the agenda is published on Thursdays, and we have our packets by Friday, and that has served us well for many, many years. And I think that it is simply unreasonable to have that legislation, it's going to be impractical for the business of the city. And you will see likely an inordinate amount of time-sensitive legislation that will result in additional special council meetings. I don't recommend that we make any changes. So, that's why I'm not going to support the motion. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Low?
The reason why I'm making this motion is for the simple fact that, those that don't know, we received this packet on Friday, and many of us were, so it is, we also receive it through email, but many of us were, and Friday when we come to pick this up, the majority of administration is gone, if not all. You have Saturday and Sunday where you can't ask questions, and Monday it is sometimes pretty hard to get in hold of individuals. The one person I can say that returns a call is Mr. Elstro. But I'm, I think we owe it more to the public to be able to look over things. I think less communications and ordinances would stop getting tabled because we would have the facts, and we would be able to review and make better decisions for the city of Lima. And that's the reason why I put this motion on the table. It has been seconded. And that's where I stand.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. President.
Who seconded?
Me.
Mr. Glenn seconded the motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I've been on council for over 10 years. This has not been an issue for me. I pick my docket up on either Thursday or Friday when it's ready, and I have plenty of time to read it, and ask the questions, and have questions answered. I will not support the motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
As many will remember, my issue approximately four years ago were the add-ons, and we had a rule in council about that. And that was a hardship, and they've complied, it's gotten, it's helped other departments to prepare the legislation in time for us to get our packets on Thursday, late Thursday afternoon, or Friday. I will not be supporting the motion because the last almost, you know, three years now that I've been on council, I have no problems getting a hold of some people to ask questions on Monday, and if not, I ask them this evening, or the few times we've asked something to be put on second reading. I mean, that's there for that reason. And sometimes, the second reading is, you know, I may not always support it, but I respect the counselor asking for more time, and I will vote in favor of something like that for their benefit. But for your motion this evening, I will not support it. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, could I take?
Let's take a roll call. Those in favor, just take a roll call, yes or no? Yes is in favor of the motion.
Yes.
Is it in favor? Okay, Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
No.
Ms. Adams?
No.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
No.
And Mr. Nixon.
No. The motion fails due to a lack of a majority. Is there anything further, Mr. Low?
Yes. One last thing I would like to say. I wanted to do this so we could work a little bit harder for individuals to make sure that we had the correct answers when we're out and about, and people ask us questions. You have four that feel we need it, you have four that feel we don't need it. It speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Mr. Tevin?
Just to follow up on the last comments, I think that there's, there's more at play than it speaks for itself. I think that council members have an obligation to be prepared for this meeting. That's part of our responsibility as council members.
Absolutely.
And I just, I felt that that requirement would probably cause more add-ons in the future, which we don't want. And I'm, I feel very comfortable in answering questions to my constituents. Have not had a problem doing it about legislation that I've dealt with, and I've always gotten my questions answered. So, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I'd like to ask Mr. Elstro if he could step up, and I left you a message earlier today asking you to speak on something I was approached by a resident a couple weeks ago concerning the new signs that are posted under the speed limit signs around schools that says during restricted hours. I was unaware of those signs. I inquired to your city engineer, who informed me that, yes, this is something you've, with the Ohio Revised Code 4511.21, 212, that is school zone sign laws. And I would appreciate if you could, for the public's benefit and for the rest of us on council, get a better understanding what that refers to during restricted hours. Thank you.
Mr. Elstro?
Mr. President and council, thank you for the question, Ms. Adams. Actually, the discussion of school signs and the correct nomenclature really goes back to Regional Planning Commission study, I believe, probably three to four years ago. At that time, there was a survey that was taken by the regional planning and found certain inconsistencies, or the really, the only commonality was the inconsistencies of various schools and the times that were posted, warning traffic that the 20 mile an hour time or speed restraint was in effect. As many of us know, the school times alter significantly, not only from school to school, but also from week to week and even day to day. The class times or the school times may let out early on certain days for certain reasons. Parents-teacher conferences, there are also holidays and free days, and to have a sign out there that says 20 miles per hour from 7:30 to 2:30 or 3 o'clock, whatever, had been posted in the past, quite frankly, was not flexible as the school schedules were. This was not just a problem endemic to Allen County, it was seen as a problem statewide. So, the Revised Code, Section 4511-21, states that 20 miles per hour in school zones during school recess and while children are going to or leaving school during the opening and closing hours, that is when we should be traveling 20 miles per hour, and when 20 mile an hour school signs, speed limit signs are erected. In other words, the new signs that say during restricted hour calls for the driver to be vigilant, and as that driver sees children around schools at normal times, times where in the morning or afternoon when they suspect that children are leaving or coming to the building or during recess, that is when we, as responsible drivers, have an obligation under Revised Code to travel 20 miles an hour. So, as Ms. Adams pointed out, throughout the city, instead of specific times listed, you'll see signs changed by the city engineer, which are compatible with the manual for uniform control of traffic devices, and they will simply set, simply state 20 miles an hour restricted during restricted hours. So, it's incumbent upon us drivers to pay attention to the conditions in the neighborhood of schools. Those signs slow our cars down, one more reason to stay off of cell phones, one more reason to be vigilant, and careful drivers so that we don't have injury, or worse, to schoolchildren and pedestrians.
Mr. President. Mr. Elstro? In driving around over the weekend, I happened to be traveling down the new corridor of Elm Street, and what a wonderful improvement that is. Was very impressed, and I hope the residents appreciate, you know, the hard work that the city and the contractor did to make those changes. But I did notice around the parochial school, under their speed limit sign, they had their hours. Does this only apply to public schools, or will this apply to all schools?
This will be consistent throughout the city of Lima, wherever we have schools posted, be they, be they public schools.
Charter.
Parochial schools, or charter schools, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, also, Friday, I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking of the Technology Innovation Center out on South Main Street. The event was captured and had been replayed over GTV2 over the weekend, and I think in the upcoming days, if you get an opportunity, please catch that, try and watch it. Long time coming, but should be a wonderful result and development for that end of town and for new jobs coming to Lima as well. And I really enjoyed attending that. I appreciate Ms. Councilor Tevin's remarks, also concerning the comment made by Councilor Low, you know, it speaks for itself. I resent that comment, and there's some implying innuendos with that. You made the motion, didn't have a majority, it didn't pass, and I didn't appreciate the added comments. I didn't plan on commenting either afterwards, but since you took the opportunity, I feel I have the right to do so, too. But in fairness, you didn't speak to any of the, to myself, to let me know what you were thinking or your concerns, and that may have helped prior to you making that motion tonight, if we could have had a conversation about it, rather than, at least for me, you know, propose it cold to the floor. So, just a word of advice in the future, you know, I'd appreciate some contact as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, I got a couple things. Howard, let me just meet you up for a few minutes there. The bicycle route, Howard, Howard, yeah, oh, you're set there? Okay. I knew you want to get up again. The bicycle route there off of Cedar Street, we was asking for a sign to go there, let folks know there. I think we brought it up. Can we get that down there? Also, the one-way sign on Jameson there. Okay. Thank you for that. Also, I want to thank everyone who came out and assisted us on the Thanksgiving dinner at Lima Towers. It was a great, great event, and a lot of folks, and a lot of people was very happy, and all the volunteers came out. Thank you guys so much. Without you guys, it couldn't happen. Also, I appreciate all the ones who worked so hard on the new economic development of our great city of Lima. And I know that was a long, long battle, the mayor putting things together, and the administration, Steve, and all of them, everybody got together, and like Ms. Adams said, it can bring more jobs here, and everybody was excited about it, everyone was talking about, and I didn't get the opportunity to get there. I was in Columbus that day, working on a special project. But it was great, and very exciting. Also, I'd like to thank all the folks doing a great job in our Martin Luther King State there, and I thank that owner so much, what he doing there, he making improvement, he making a change in the area, and a lot of good work going in the area. And I also thank Tony, Tony Clay, the manager, who's been keeping the place under there, and I know we had some bad things back in the past, now it's a new future, and just exciting things going on there. Also, I thank all the folks who helped me out Saturday. We had a lot of folks came for turkeys, and I want to let everyone know that always help And I know I said every year, if someone needs some food, give it to them, but you got Jerry Lewis, you got a lot of different churches having events. If everyone don't know, they can, they'll put together a website, and hopefully it'll be in the newspaper, that you can go to these places and get a meal for Thanksgiving. It's an exciting moment for me. Thanksgiving, Christmas, I love to help out, and I appreciate my wife for her donations and stuff. She wants to support this all the time, but we want to help people out. And if I had a one today, I hope no one be hungry in our city or around the world, but we got to help people. You know, our soldier families, they over there, I know they missing their family, though. We pray and hope that they can have a good Thanksgiving too. I know Sam had brought that up. What I want to tell Jesse, though, everybody have different styles of way they handle different things, you know, and, you know, your situation be different from my situation is different from everybody else. I know I brought this up a lot of times in there, you know, and some, some people don't feel that way, split vote there. I did not know it, though, but whenever anything deal with the people in the sixth war, I always want to be first to let them know. I want to have an answer to let them know, and that's, it's my style, you know, and there for them and try to do the best I can to make sure they, they living good in the area or they have a problem in the area. And I know some folks did not like my style of work, but the folks always there to help them. I'm there to help you, no matter what it is, you know, information, and I know my, I know, I know I go seven days a week, nonstop sometime, because I love the peoples in the area, I love the work they doing, trying to clean things up, doing a lot of good work. We have folks that volunteer work on, trying to help people rake their lees. I had to put it in the newspaper to help them. They said, Mr. Glenn, we need, we need to help get the lees up before the people come around. There's a lot of folks needing improvement this summer, but these are some of the things we go through and, you know, but always keep the style with your folks, because all situations different, you know. Some I ask, some might not ask, but I wish everyone here a happy Thanksgiving, and once again, don't forget about the needy. Please help them. Thank you.
Mr. Elstro.
Just to clarify, Mr. Glenn made two requests, one was for a bicycle sign on Cedar Street, and that is going to be part of the overall Phase Five of the bike way. So we don't have funding for all the signs on the street yet, but that is coming. So if you would feed that back to the constituent who I asked of.
Great, okay.
And Mr. Glenn did in advance of this meeting, asked me about the one-way alley off of Jameson Street going to the west between Elm and Spring Street, and asked if that one-way sign can be removed. I will be forwarding that to the city engineer. I'm not sure whether that alley has been designated one-way and journalized by the Traffic Commission, or whether the engineer can unilaterally remove that sign. So I will be referring that to the right place, and we will follow up as appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. In response to Mr. Lowe's motion, you know, we have the communications, and just looking at tonight's, there are nine of them. Five of them are requesting legislation, which will be placed on the next meeting, which gives us three weeks for those five issues. Two weeks. One was a liquor permit, and then three were routine contracts. Normally, if there are issues that need further examination, they are referred to committee. So I see no reason why we're stuck just by Friday. Usually, when that legislation comes on, there's been ample time to have it researched, either through a committee meeting or meetings, and/or the time from the communication to the legislation being placed on the agenda. So that was my reason for not supporting that. Other than that, I would, I also would like to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We have beautiful weather, see lots of Christmas decorations, uh, as a result of the weather, so we'll be in the mood. Thank you.
Definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. I have a couple of items. Number one, I want to refer to council of the whole. An issue of reorganizing of the auditor's office as it ties in with a part of the charter review, recommendations that we have in our committee yet to consider. I'd like to make that motion. Second. The motion, the second, is to refer a reorganization of the auditor's office to council of the whole. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. Secondly, I'd like, I'm making a motion to have the law director or the clerk prepare a resolution congratulating the Lima City Schools.
Yes.
Under-14 soccer team, which won the state championship yesterday.
Aye.
That's a motion. Second.
Agreed.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. I'm not going to make any further comment. I said what I had to say on your motion, Mr. Lowe. I can only counter with the fact that four opposed, it speaks for itself. I would like also to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It is on Thursday this year. Kind of a running joke in the business I'm in, it seems like every Monday before Thanksgiving, everybody says, oh, my God, Thanksgiving is this Thursday. With that, Ms. Townsend.
Mr. President, I move that Lima City Council be adjourned until December 3 at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Second. The motion, the second, is to adjourn Lima City Council until December 3 at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers. Is there any discussion? I have one thing under discussion. Mr. Caprella, I have one item I've met, forgot under miscellaneous business. Is there a Toys for Tots collection barrel in the city building? And how long will it be there? Okay, so you have until our next council meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just make sure everybody's aware of it. All right, that's the end of the discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries, council is adjourned.